How was you went to Barcelona for one thing.
I like those. They're not smaller.
You have Tim in person?
I know, I know.
Where's the Cosgrove right up front?
I would love it. It's one of those conferences. Don't say, say don't know.
Is, one of the things that the Senate has done is they're trying to transition to a flat tax. This again impacts us because, at least under the existing formula, we'll see where we go from here. You know, our revenues are really driven by a state statute which looks at the proceeds from the income tax and the sales tax and the commercial activity tax. So to the extent that you're lowering income taxes, obviously that has potentially an adverse impact. Now, proponents of that would argue that in fact it generates more revenue because it generates more spending on the sales tax side. But that's up for debate. And the other thing which we'll talk a bit about, there are a lot of property tax proposals that are floating around that are likely to be included in the final version of this budget, many of which thankfully don't seem to at this point directly affect us. Next please. So again, just to do a brief recap, as the governor introduced this budget, he introduced an increase from 1.5 to 1.75 and kept the statutory formula in place. The House essentially reduced it, although what's important is they took out the formula that, from which the library fund revenues were derived. So it is just purely an appropriation. Now, I point out that this is not the first time in recent memory that they've done something like this. In the past, what they've done is they have just put in an appropriation. You may recall the last time that happened, that actually worked to our benefit because throughout the course of that biennium, revenues took a nosedive. And had we been on the formula at that point, we would have actually lost money. But the flat funding in that instance helped us. The difference here is that what the House and the Senate has concurred in this thus far, is they've taken the language out of the statute altogether. In the past, it was just suspended. So obviously that's caused some anxiety with respect to the stability of funding and things like that. But right now, as we speak, that statutory formula language has been removed. Now, the director was down in Columbus and many of, I think some of you were, you were down there as well when we were dealing with not just the statutory formula from which the state revenues are derived, but there were some changes in the, one of the House versions, it actually affected how it was distributed within the county, which would have had a pretty adverse effect on us. That was ultimately fixed before the House passed its version. The, and, did you have a question?
No, no.
I'm sorry. And I'm going to ask Dez to address real quick, there's a provision in here regarding the display of certain materials. And Dez, if you'll talk about that real quickly.
Yeah, very briefly, thanks Tim, and good afternoon, everyone. So there is a provision in the budget that will require libraries to move books related to sexual orientation and gender identity from the view of children under 18. Now, if you wanted to look through the budget, it's about a 5,500-page document, but this particular language is on page 2,307. It is fairly vague language. It doesn't identify any policing or provisions related to penalties if a library violates this, but it's pretty straightforward. We're still trying to understand if there are any implications of penalties, but as of right now, the language is just about five line items. And it just particularly states that that type of material has to be out of the view or primary view of children under 18.
Page 2,370? And seven.
Silent on who enforces this?
Yes, I mean, we, I mean, it's, oh, in terms of who enforces it from a state perspective?
Right. Who would?
I don't know that they have.
It doesn't say, but they may put, you know, if this were to go through, they may put in rules in place to actually govern or police this particular policy.
And, Tim, I'm going to ask you sort of a constitutional question. Is it appropriate to make that sort of policy directive in a biennial budget bill?
Because there's sense of good policy.
First Amendment impacts.
So, I guess they get to decide what's appropriate, right? I mean, the reality of it is, is in the budget bill, they make all types of decisions like that. Now, there may be an argument with respect to constitutionality. I don't think there's a state constitution argument of it being included in the budget, though. I just wanted to mention the property tax side, again, there's a lot going here on property, a lot going here, on in here on property taxes. One of the things that's most interesting, I think we're probably okay here in Cuyahoga County, but it really gives the county budget commission authority, pretty dramatic authority to just unilaterally reduce, excuse me, reduce taxes if it feels as though the taxes are excessive and unnecessary. Again, there's not a lot of definition around that. Now, Mr. Corrigan, I suspect there's some constitutional issues around that as well. We'll see how that plays out. But it's, I think a lot of folks are really concerned about that. And I think there's probably, in fact, in some counties, like in Cuyahoga County, the county, the commission, the budget commission, has in fact reduced some taxes for school districts. So there's a question again with statutory authority, and I suspect there'll be some constitutional questions around that as well. But it will be a new role in statute for county budget commissions. Again, as was indicated early, flat funding for the library for the blind. And again, there are revisions to board terms, reducing terms from seven to four years. Next slide, please. And again, I think you all have this, but this just kind of goes through, goes through the steps, if you will, in terms of how those terms would ultimately be staggered. Next, please. Again, the allocation is similar to the allocation that was in the governor's proposed budget. It is essentially flat funded. And again, as difficult as this is, and this is never something to feel great about, but the reality of it is, given, I think, some of the fears that we had at the outset, both with respect to where the state was going from a revenue perspective, and also just a lot of the different dynamics and politics, we actually ended up in a place from funding perspective that I think is fairly decent. Again, there are a lot of issues that we should be concerned about with the statutory language, but that, if it doesn't get worked out on this budget, we can live to fight another day on. And I remind folks that, again, that language in the past has been suspended, so it's not the first time we're dealing with this. Next, please.
If I could just say something, because it's important to understand where we were and where we could have been, right? So under the governor's budget, we probably would have seen about a million dollars of the increase over two years, over the biennial. If we had received the, the one that was coming out of the House, we would have seen a $15 million decrease in the amount of money that we received over two years.
And when you're saying "we," you're talking about all libraries?
We're talking CPL.
Cleveland Public Library.
Just CPL. And if, so we still, and now, given, if we receive this funding that we, that is currently there, we will see a $2 million decrease over two years. Right? So going from a million dollar increase under the governor's budget to a $2 million decrease under this new budget from the state. But it's not the $15 million decrease that was, is why we had everyone go out and call and, and, you know, reach out to their representatives.
But going back to the governor's budget, and just hypothetically, let's say there was a line item veto, is that in our best interest? Because if, with all the other work being done to reduce taxes writ large, right? That seems also not ideal for us.
Well, there's two ways and maybe more ideal for us. One being that we still, there is a PLF. And for us, we've been bonding money for our buildings against a PLF. If there is no PLF, that makes it more difficult for us to bond money. So in the end, having a PLF is in our best interest at CPL.
Another aspect of this that is sort of unspoken, except when you're reading the Wall Street Journal, the instability in the national economy, the tariffs and other things are creating, exposes us more if the statutory procedure that's been in place, the status quo, we'd be more susceptible to across-the-board cuts and things like that. Is that a fair thing to say?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, and I was going to get to this, but I'll get to it now. And I want to underscore, this is a conference committee process, there's three different bills. We are, we continue to pursue aggressively the best option for us. And the director sent out a communication to conferees, which we're talking with the governor's office. So I don't want to leave the impression that somehow we're just accepting this as it is today. We continue to work very aggressively, and hopefully we'll know by about this time next week where we ended up. It was interesting this morning, the OBM and the Legislative Services Commissioner, LBO, gave their presentation on their predictions for revenues. They always give revised projections at the outset of the conference committee, it's the first people to testify. And there was a lot of fear that those projections would be downgraded dramatically. And in fact, at least from OBM, they're pretty flat. They actually project a $35 million increase in revenues over the two-year biennial. But, to your point, the OBM director was very clear that there are a lot of mixed signals out there, and probably more so than normal, dangers in terms of what could happen down the road, and she mentioned specifically tariffs. And what would that mean for Ohio's economy? So those risks are there, they're probably a little higher, they did not predict a recession. But to your point, if there's a silver lining here, if it stays as it is today, and again, I underscore that, you know, we're not accepting that. We're working to get back, and assume that you've seen a copy of the correspondence that the director sent out, we're working to get back to the governor's version. But it does, in some respects, shield against risks of downturn revenues, which as I indicated before, when this was last done, they suspended the formula, it just gave us a flat line ahead of net year, revenues tanked, and we actually ended up benefiting, I think significantly at that point. So yeah, there are risks.
But at least for this biennial, the change from having a PLF or not having a PLF does not expose us to more risk if the economy goes south?
That's correct. I mean, there's still, to the director's point, there is still a public library fund. The issue becomes is how money gets into it, right? But there is still a PLF. But, but yes, it shields us to an extent, but unlike the federal government, the governor has a lot of authority to reduce expenditures without legislative consent. So what we've seen in the past, and thankfully it's been a long time since we've seen this, is the governor has had to go in and make cuts, and has cut the public library fund, the local government fund, school, I mean, so.
That's what Governor Taft did, basically.
Correct, yes.
At the 08 crisis.
Regardless of if it is appropriation or off the top, 1.7 or 7.5.
That is correct, yes. Yeah, and at that point, I think when Governor Taft, I think you're right, that was the last one to do it, it was actually a statutory, it was a formula, but he just went across the board and cut multiple programs as a result of the deficit at that point. Next, please. Oh, actually, I mixed, there we go. So again, I want to emphasize that we are working aggressively, and again, want to thank Shanice for all her great work on this as well, and she keeps us on task. But it is, you know, we continue to work with the senators, this is probably, you know, in the leadership, as well as our delegation, because even though this is kind of a closed-room process, where legislators, you know, caucuses matter and kind of the pushback matters, it's a different dynamic. We've talked about this before in conference. Representative Sweeney, who has been enormously supportive of us, and I know that, you know, we've met with her on multiple times, and other members of the conference committee, including the Senator Serino. And again, thank the director, because we spent a lot of time talking with these folks one-on-one over the past, past couple of years, and that really is so important at moments like this. But we continue to work with them. As I said, the Democrats probably have a little less leverage now than they did two years ago, just because of the dynamics in the House. But again, we continue to work with all six and the leadership. And the governor has been probably one of us, one of our bigger supporters, so the hope is to keep this high on his list as well. I think one of the realistic challenges is it's, you know, there are so many issues going around in this budget, that at the end of the day, it's easy to say, well, they're getting the same amount of money anyhow. Do I want to die on that hill over a statutory formula? We'll see how that plays out, and hopefully we'll be able to negotiate something better out of the conference process. Just want to mention the major issues that are out there, obviously the tax cuts, and these property tax issues are going to be, are going to be very, very big in this budget. And a lot of political subdivisions are at huge risk. Again, thankfully, we're not, one of the things that this bill does is it eliminates emergency levies, which we don't have. It prohibits the use of replacement levies, I think ours are all continuing, continuing levies, which was really smart when that was done, so it doesn't affect us. It eliminates inside millage, which is a huge issue, but we don't have inside millage, so that's not an issue for us. But if you're the city of Cleveland, or the CMSD, it's like, probably between the two of them, it's $80 million, so it's, they're big numbers. So that's going to get a lot of attention. Next, please. We talked a little bit about this, the revenue estimates came in again this morning, which they were better, I think, than most people expected, so that is good news in the budget process, because, you know, the reality of it is, had they come in with big numbers, there would have been more pressure on us, so that was good news. Next, please. I talked a little bit about this. Again, thankfully, these are not issues that at this point directly affect us, but we are watching these property tax proposals very, very closely to ensure that they do not, because for us, you know, for many libraries, obviously, it's our lifeblood. Next, please. We, I think we'll pass this on this one. 335, again, I mentioned this, this is a massive tax reform bill, it was introduced just a week and a half ago. The reason I mention it is there's a lot of speculation that provisions from this bill will find their way into the budget bill, primarily the inside millage. Again, I mention it because you're going to hear a lot about this, I think, over the next week or so, because every political subdivision from the cities, the school districts, the park districts are severely affected by this. But again, as we sit here today, we are not, we had that conversation, so that is good news for us. So, again, and we've started to talk about this, where do we go from here? Obviously, we are very focused on the next, the next 10 days, two weeks. Governor's required to file, you know, to sign this by June 30. They're anticipated, they anticipate concluding, that is, the conference committee, their work by the 25th. That might be a little bit ambitious. And our job between now and whenever it is they complete that work is to continue and keep the pressure on with respect to getting the best that we can out of this process. You know, you mentioned the concept of a veto, I doubt, that's probably not something that would be to our favor, I wouldn't think. We can see what ultimately happens in the, in the final bill. And then, we really want to refocus, and we've had some conversations on this, and where do we go from here in terms of, you know, thinking through, how do we continue to build on the good work that we've done, refine our message, and look for opportunities in the future, whether it's the capital bill next year, and before you know it, the next operating budget will be here as well. It'll be a new administration, we've got a lot of work to do between now and then as we do outreach to the potential candidates, so they understand the role that we play. So there's, I mean, there's reason to be optimistic, given the types of work that we do, and it's really focusing more and more on how do we try to tie in what we're doing to the objectives of the state, whether it's workforce or things like that. So Dez, did you want to add anything, or?
No, that's great, Tim. I mean, the only thing that I would, you know, kind of piggyback off of you is just, as I would be sitting there, you all's in the table with respect to what do we do next, and just emphasizing, you know, the importance of engaging in advocacy manner, as well as just educating the community, folks that patron the library, and how these expenditures, the way that these libraries are funded, why it's important. And then also just continue engagement with elected officials and candidates, folks that are running for office, and the importance of what our libraries and the communities mean to our respective community. And so that, with that being said, that I will digress, but just continued action, continued engagement, and just educating the folks that utilize our libraries on a regular basis.
And you reminded me, there were a couple more slides, and I'll just mention this one briefly. This issue of property taxes is not going to go away. We'll get through the next couple of weeks, and hopefully we'll stay intact, but the issue's not going away. I'm sure many of you read about, I think it's actually out of Lakewood, Ohio, there's a group that's passing petitions to essentially prohibit property taxes in the state of Ohio. We'll know in the first half of July whether or not they succeed in terms of getting the signatures. But if they don't, they still have time to get it on the next November ballot, so we'll see where that goes. Obviously, that would be catastrophic at many levels for libraries and a lot of other folks. But there, I mean, we are going to have to, to Dez's point, stay vigilant with our messaging, and really think through, always being, thinking through, how do we tweak it to kind of meet the moment, if you will. And we're also going to, you know, we've got a handful of new legislators, and as I said, we're going to have a new governor, we're going to have multiple candidates, I suspect, between now and then. Again, that provides, in my view, opportunity. So with that, Madam Chairwoman?
Thank you.
End of my report.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we received any communications this time, and now going to move into the president's report. So, as most of you all know, we broke ground at Falls.
Yoohoo!
Sure. It was, it's been a long time coming. It was there, and we, the library was well represented, and so was a lot of the elected officials there. I'm so excited to see it, that it's right down the street from where I live, my Tom and Matt, we all, there's a lot of us that are interested in seeing what happens next. So I'm very excited, and everything was done perfectly, so thank you about that. And also, we went to the Glenville Reimagined Library, wow, I just walked in there, it's like, it's huge.
Such a great crowd.
It's huge, it was very nice, it was very nice, and I do appreciate all the work, and it was well-attended, it was packed there, so, and we do got to thank.
Kudos to Public Services.
Yes.
Peter, for all his work on making sure that the community, his, him and his staff, walk the streets, the.
Oh, they were there.
To make sure the community knew about the opening, so.
And Peter was on cloud nine.
Yes, and we do got to give an extra shout-out to the Joseph Mandela Foundation for providing additional funding, and it's, they're on a roll. We're going to go to Fleet next, which they contributed additional funding for that as well. And I don't know if anyone else wants to contribute to anything special that they did since our last board meeting, please do.
I just want to say, I can't take too much responsibility for the turnout, because the community really loved, loves their library, and they were excited to get back, so, thank you guys.
Yes, you could tell, they were there full-fledged. It was very nice, so.
Glad to see you, Dez.
I don't know if anyone wants to add anything else, so.
No. Trustee Rashid was there with all of her family.
Oh, I love that.
We had extra kids this time, but it was, I think my favorite part about, because this is now, I think, my third, or yeah, third attendance in a grand opening, was, I think the special thing about Glenville was the diversity of the community that showed up. Granted, I think every resident at every library grand opening is, it's fascinating to see, but I think particularly the effort to have residents, especially seniors and elder community members. They were way more presence than the kids, so which was, I think, extra special.
Yeah, it was different.
But my, my nieces and nephews always, that's it, it's a tradition, they have to go to every grand opening now, so they enjoyed it, and the food was wonderful, the thoughtfulness around ensuring that the music, I was hearing, because I didn't sit in the seats, I was standing with other community members and other library staff, just hearing residents talk about each person making their speeches and how excited they are, it was really fun.
Thank you. Director?
Well, I think she recognized that I was going to say something about her, because she left.
Oh.
Here's Erica, is featured in Phenomenal Women Magazine this.
Let's see the picture.
So, she is, let's get to her. I know, it's real great, little article they print.
Love it.
Yes, it is. And so I was going to say something about her, but now we'll only say bad things about her, since she walked out.
We're going to have to put that on the CPL webpage.
Yeah, yeah. We'll work, they'll work to make sure it's available for everybody to see. But this also just speaks to, I mean, I think, I talked to all of, you know, the other library directors in the county and all of this, and they are all like, what are you guys doing? You're always on the news all the time, you're in the newspaper all the time. So kudos to Tana and her folks for making sure that we were getting out there and getting exposed and doing that, but yeah, so, I just wanted to let everybody know about that, and it was going to be Sanzi, who's going to be our feature for the director's report. But, and thank you to all of the board members for making time to be at all of these different events that we've had. There's so much going on, so many things happening, and I see all of you making the time to come, and so I'm just appreciative of you taking the time to be with us.
Thank you, Director.
I have to say, the pictures from Glenville were just awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
I could look at those all day. One, I'm still like, really thinking about Sanzi's story, and I'm curious, is there a plan to publish or codify, collect these awesome stories that we keep hearing about to be able to kind of memorialize them and share? She sounds like an awesome.
Well, now, I will give that project to Ms. Melanie, so we should write up something and then keep a page of it, and we'll just take that and make into the memorial moments of Cleveland Public Library.
And one event that I keep hearing about is the Book Boogie, so I'm wondering, I don't know if that was talked about last time, but if you could share more about that event.
Yeah, you know, that's a, that's more of an Erica thing, and.
One time I say, go ahead.
Wait a minute, okay, Jacqueline, Jacqueline, come up and talk about the Book Boogie, right? We, I mean, I, seriously, sometimes there's so many things going on, I hear about them, I don't know what's going on, right?
I heard the turnout was fantastic, it's a skating rink, I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great.
Oh, I was there, wait a minute, what am I talking about? I was there, I was at the Book Boogie. And it's, also talk about the Library Dad's Brunch.
Oh, definitely.
On Saturday.
Okay, definitely, well, the Book Boogie was amazing, it was our kickoff to the Cleveland Week Summer, and we were able to just partner with the city of Cleveland, because they have their summer soundtrack, where we actually give data to the mayor to show that we are not only just engaging with scholars, but we're really keeping them every single week. And so we were able to partner with them in the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, there was about 1,100 people who showed up. It was amazing, it was.
Yeah, it was, well, she had a skating rink on the table.
No, it was, oh, yeah, you were there. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, it was at the MLK Campus, and thank you to John Lang, I just have to give John Lang the biggest shout-out, because when I told him that I wanted to turn, that we wanted to turn it into a skating rink, he did not say no. And he could have, you know, but he didn't, he ensured that we had the amount of people that we needed to turn it into a skating rink and bumper cars, all into the, in the new library on the Table of Brotherhood. And so it was amazing, I think that our families really enjoyed themselves, and like the director always said, since the first day I started, like, he wants to ensure that we're a destination, and I think that helps make us a destination to see the libraries can be whatever we want them to be. And we thank you for allowing us to let us do whatever we come up with to, for our families, and so thank you for that. And on Saturday, we had our Library Dad's Brunch, where we welcome fathers of scholars from preschool and kindergarten, because that goes back to our strategic plan of ensuring that we're kindergarten-ready. And there were so many dads who showed up, they did yoga, director spoke to them, Michael Young spoke to them and encouraged them. They had such an amazing brunch, Mr. Eubanks over at the MLK Campus, he did a storytime. The goal was to really to model the fathers, how storytime can look, right, and how they can bring storytime to life. And so I think they left encouraged, that's all, that's all we wanted them to do, was leave encouraged, but to keep coming back. They had a pledge, where they pledged to continue to keep coming back to the Cleveland Public Library, but also to just make stories fun for their children. And we partnered with Prefor Cle, and we were able to get providers there, Starting Point, all of our amazing community partners. This wasn't the time to really do face painting and things like that, but it was really to ensure that. and things like that, but it was really to ensure that preschool readiness was on display, and I believe we did a great job of doing that.
It was a fascinating thing to see, like 100 yoga mats out, and 75 dads with babies hanging over them, and doing yoga with them, it was so, it was just really, really good.
Yeah, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
So I do have a question. I saw a lot of kids signing up for Cleveland Reads Ethic Level Opening, is there a deadline to sign up?
Oh, no, so, oh, fine, okay, so our scholars can continue to sign up, we want them to, so we can go, we, our program began last Monday, we already have a little over 3,000 scholars who are registered, our goal is 10K or more, but, and our program goes until August 2nd, so we want families to continue signing up, but not just sign up, we want them to come into our branches and participate in our in-person programs that we have all around curiosity, and so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. At this time, because there was no joint Finance and Human Resource Committee meeting, I moved to temporarily suspend the regulations of the Board of Trustees in Article 9 and 10, requiring referral of resolutions to committees to consider the following resolutions.
Second motion.
Ms. Buntz?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
We're now going to move into the Finance Committee Report, Trustee Corrigan?
Yes, Exhibit 1, a resolution to accept the gifts from the month of May, whereas the Board received gifts of money, library service materials, technology, resources, and miscellaneous non-manetary gifts from the generous citizens from time to time, whereas attached to this resolution is the gift report, be resolved that the gifts described in the gift report for May of 2025 be accepted on the conditions connected with said gifts in accordance with revised code, sorry about that, 3375.40K, so moved.
Second.
Ms. Buntz?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
And I went back too far there. Exhibit 2 is the resolution to accept a grant from the McGregor Foundation for Senior Programming, do I have the right?
No.
At the wrong month?
Yeah.
Or do you want this one?
No, I just, for some reason, it went to the May, to May. Agendas, come on, here we go. Okay. A resolution to accept a gift from the estate of Marjorie H. Wells, Exhibit 2, whereas Pamela Cooper contacted the Cleveland Public Library on May 19, 2025, to notify the library that her mother, Marjorie H. Wells, who passed away on April 12th, at age 101, directed donations to and bequeathed $10,000 to the Ohio Library for the blind and print disabled in her last will and testament. Whereas Mrs. Wells was born in Westerville, Ohio, in 1923, she worked at the Kelgor War Plan assembling weapons until her husband came home from World War II, she enjoyed being a receptionist at Liberty Presbyterian Church for 23 years, losing her eyesight, she retired in 2010, she loved listening to classical music and loved reading her talking books for the OLBPD. Whereas Mrs. Wells was preceded in death by her husband of 75 years, Ralph W. Wells, she is survived by her two daughters, Pamela W. and Dennis Cooper of Westerville, Ohio, and Janet L. Wells, and her significant other, Chet Starnes of Ashland, Ohio, a grandson, Scott A. Cooper with his spouse Sharon of Columbus, Ohio, and great-granddaughters, Eliana and Lydia Cooper. And whereas the entire Cleveland Public Library system, in particular, OLBPD, are grateful to Mrs. Wells for honoring literacy and her plan giving, thereby supporting future generations to access materials and services at OLBPD. Whereas on January 16, 2029, the Board celebrated the 60th birthday of the library by making it the occasion for requests for donations to an endowment for the work with the blind, thus formally establishing the Endowment for the Blind Fund. Given the restriction on this bequest, the library administration recommends depositing this gift in the Endowment for the Blind Fund. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board pursuant to authorities set forth in our revised code 337540K hereby accepts this generous gift from the estate of Marjorie H. Wells in the amount of $10,000 to be restricted for the Ohio Library for the blind and print disabled and be deposited in the Endowment for the Blind Fund account 202-046-46100, restricted gifts. And further resolved that the Board of the Library expresses its heartfelt gratitude for this generous gift and directs that a copy of this resolution be sent to the family of Mrs. Wells as an expression of sympathy and appreciation from this Board, so moved.
Second.
Ms. Buntz?
Very cool, we do not say no to this.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
Exhibit 3 is a resolution to accept TechCred Program Grant from the Ohio Department of Development. Whereas the Ohio Department of Development TechCred Program allows employers to invest in their employees by providing grants on a reimbursement basis to cover costs associated with obtaining certain technology-focused and industry-recognized credentials, whereas employers who apply to participate in the program who are accepted are eligible to receive reimbursement up to $2,000 per approved credential, and up to a total of $30,000 in reimbursement per funding period. Whereas because of the nature of the credentials that are eligible for reimbursement on the TechCred Program, the library has selected employees from Cleveland to participate in TechCred-approved courses, and the library intends to seek reimbursement for a total of 16 credentials at the rate of up to $1,100 per credential. Whereas the library applied to participate in the TechCred Program was approved for employees to receive credentials in Microsoft 365 Administrator, Microsoft Certified Azure Artificial Intelligence Fundamentals, Microsoft Certified Azure Fundamentals, and CompTIA Security Plus. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Cleveland Public Library Board Trustees pursuant to the authorities set forth in revised code 337540K hereby accepts the grant from the Ohio Department of Development in the amount of $17,100 to be deposited in the Cleveland National Special Revenue Fund account 231-042-42200, state aid, on a reimbursement basis following successful completion by selected library staff with the above-described credentials and authorizes executive director, CEO, or is designated to execute such instruments or agreements as are necessary to effectuate the terms of the grant, which agreement shall be subject to approval of the chief legal officer, so moved.
Second.
This is obviously just a wonderful thing, and whoever, and whosever part of the staff recognized our ability to take advantage of this, I want to thank them.
That's Sardi.
I saw her name there.
Great.
Second.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Exhibit 4 is a resolution to accept the State Library of Ohio funding for the Ohio Library for the blind and print disabled, whereas Cleveland Public Library began its first organized service to visually disabled parents as early as 1903, whereas the library was designated a regional library for the blind for the northern Ohio counties under the Federal Pratsmood Act of 1931, under the direction of the Library of Congress, whereas the library has provided excellent library service to blind and print disabled residents needing specialized materials and equipment, wherein eventual libraries cannot provide such services. Whereas in July 1, 2009, the State Library of Ohio mandated the Cleveland Public Library to provide complete statewide services for blind and disabled residents who are eligible for the service and reside in any of the 88 Ohio counties. Whereas on May 22, 2025, the State Library Board had approved an agreement to pay the Cleveland Public Library for expenses for the period July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, to continue to administer statewide library services to blind and print disabled residents in an amount not to exceed $1,508,094, and therefore be resolved that the Board accepts the State Library of Ohio funding award up to $1,508,194 to be paid from the General State Revenue Fund, with up to $150,000 to be paid from fiscal year 2024 LSTA carryover funds, up to $84,000 to be paid from fiscal year 2025 LSTA funds, and up to $1,274,194 to be paid from Fund 5GB0. Be it further resolved, the president or the executive director, CEO, or is designated is authorized to enter into agreement with the State Library of Ohio for the funding and to execute such other agreements and instruments, and that may be necessary appropriate, including those in excess of $75,000, to effectuate the terms and conditions of this resolution, which agreements and instruments shall be subject to approval of the library's chief legal officer. May further resolved, the Board of Library Trustees of Ohio, the Board of Library Trustees of the Cleveland Public Library expressed its appreciation to the State Library of Ohio, so moved.
Second.
Ms. Buntz?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
And congratulations to Will and Santi, at least we have something that's certain going forward because of you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Exhibit 5 is a resolution to accept funding from the Cleveland Public Library Foundation. Whereas the Cleveland Public Library Foundation raises funds and seeks grants from organizations and donors in order to be able to provide financial support to the Cleveland Public Library, whereas the foundation actively pursues funding for the library's strategic plan priorities, including the call to address the inequalities facing the city of Cleveland through efforts to close the gaps and through sustained implementation of the Comprehensive Cleveland Reads Campaign. Whereas consistent with these objectives, the foundation has raised restricted funds totaling $100,000 to support the library's program in early literacy, digital literacy, and outreach services, which gifts are set forth in detail in the chart attached, chart attached is Exhibit 8 to this resolution. Whereas the foundation has secured $30,000 in early literacy funding, $30,000 in digital literacy funding, and $40,000 for the outreach and programming services department, programming. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Cleveland Public Library Board Trustees pursuant to the authorities set forth in revised code 3375.40K hereby accepts the restricted funding in the amount of $30,000 to be deposited in early literacy fund account 258-046-4610012713, $30,000 to be deposited in the Founder's Fund account 2030464610020301, and $40,000 to be deposited in the Founder's Fund account 20304646100, totaling $100,000, and expresses its gratitude to the Cleveland Public Library Foundation and all its generous donors as outlined above in Exhibit A for their support of library programming services, so moved.
Second.
Ms. Buntz?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Exhibit 6 is a resolution selecting and ranking most qualified architect firms and authorizing negotiation and agreement with a top-ranked firm for the Fleet Branch Project. Whereas the library placed an ad in the Cleveland County dealer on April 14th and 21th of 2025, announcing its request for statement of qualifications from professional design firms to provide architectural engineering services in connection with the renovation and expansion of the library's fleet campus, the Fleet project. Whereas on May 1, 2025, the statements of qualifications were submitted to the library by the following 11 architectural engineering firms listed in alphabetical order for the Fleet project. Number 1, Bielski, number 2, Boswick Design Partners, number 3, BSHM Architects, Inc., number 4, CBLH Design, Inc., number 5, DS Architecture LLC, number 6, GPD Group, number 7, HBM Architects LLC, number 8, Jake Kurtz Architects, number 9, LGA Partners LP, number 10, Moody Nolan, and number 11, Webber Murphy Fox, Inc. And whereas a selection committee, a selection committee of library staff members was formed to evaluate the statement of qualifications and to select no fewer than three firms that it considered most qualified, the selection committee met, selected the following three architectural engineering firms it determined to be the most qualified for the Fleet project, Bielski, GPD Group, and Moody Nolan. And whereas on June 3, the selection committee held discussions with each of the three shortlisted architecture firms in order to explore further their qualifications, scope and nature of service they would provide, and the various technical approaches the firms would take to the project. Whereas the library selection committee found that all three firms were impressive, and any one of them would have been an excellent partner. However, the selection committee found that Bielski's proposed comprehensive approach to the community engagement, realistic assessment of CPL's project budget, and demonstrated ability to maximize the impact of the library's planned investment in Fleet, both renovation and improvement expansion of the existing building, as well as outdoor spaces, made Bielski a compelling choice, whereas additional factors that made Bielski a standout architecture firm for the Fleet project were Bielski's past and recent successes in designing world-class technology innovation in interactive children's library spaces, and Bielski's prior experience working with the Mandel Foundation and other projects, and with the library's Glenville branch, which also involved Mandel Foundation grant funding. Whereas the library selection committee recommends the top few firms be ranked in the following order, with the first being the most qualified. Number 1, Bielski, number 2, GPD Group, number 3, Moody Nolan. Resolve, the Board hereby accepts the recommendation of the selection committee for the Fleet project. Further resolved, the Board authorizes executive director, CEO, or is designated to enter into negotiations for agreeing with Bielski in accordance with requirements of Ohio Revised Code 153.69, which provides, among other things, that if the library fails to negotiate agreement with the highest-ranked firm for prices fair and reasonable, it shall terminate negotiations with the highest-ranked firm and enter into negotiations with the firms ranked second highest. This process shall be repeated with the third-ranked firm, and the negotiations fail with the second-highest firm. And further be it resolved that upon completion of the negotiation, the executive shall submit the agreement to this Board for final approval, so moved.
Second.
I have only one question, I forget who GPD Group is, I know the others, John, but...
GPD Group, they're a local firm, a national firm headquartered in Akron with a large Cleveland studio, they didn't participate, they didn't compete to participate in the Group One projects, but they did really have excellent qualifications and really proposed kind of innovative approach to the projects, they were a very close runner-up to Bielski, who's been a great partner, obviously, in the past.
Without further discussion, vote.
Ms. Buntz?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
So it's very exciting, our next two projects will be Walls and Fleet, one on both sides, and we're excited with both of them, like those here, to understand that, you know, the ability to reach out to the staff members and start this process as soon as possible.
Yeah, if I could just add, the Board just accepted the gift from the Mandels, month, maybe two months ago, but this, this represents like light speed for the Ohio Revised Code process for selecting architecture, and that's not to say that we didn't totally do our due diligence. I do want to recognize that this is really an institutional commitment, that we take these decisions very seriously, not just the buildings team, but we have representatives from public services, and from legal, and great support from the procurement team in making this. 11 firms coming out is unprecedented.
I was wondering, I've never seen that.
I think we had seven for Glenville, and that was like a record, so to have gone to 11, it really, it's, and I'm sure there's some market conditions that influence that, but also, I think it's a testament to the design community of Cleveland, seeing Cleveland Public Library as a good client, and someone, an institution that they want to work with and serving the community. So thanks to everyone from around the library who sat through, who sifted through 11 packages of qualifications, they typically have about 50 pages, so you can ask them how much reason that is, and that all of the formal presentations, but I'm really pleased to make the recommendation.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a quick question, and I'm sorry, do you think with the change in the market conditions, like you said, is attributing to the number of people or the companies that are applying, do you think that could, in the long run or long-term, affect us positively? Whereas before, I know with the COVID, right after COVID, man, we were getting slammed.
I think it's helped us in professional, it could be helping us on the professional services side in terms of having better choices from, you know, a large...
What do you think about financially?
We haven't, on the construction side, we haven't seen it yet, we've seen a plateau, we saw the crazy spikes from 2020 through 2022, you know, was really hoping that prices might retreat in the construction sector over the last couple of years, as the COVID supply chain impacts were kind of digested, we haven't seen that, we have seen them kind of plateau, so that's been a good thing. I would say the rate of escalation in construction since '23 is far less than it was 2019 to 2022.
That's good news, though.
Doesn't a lot of lumber come from Canada, and all these tariffs have got to affect the price of lumber?
And I think we're all waiting, both in terms of a national economy and in terms of what that will be, so, yeah, hold on to your hats, but that's, it's unknown yet what those impacts will be.
And just said, are all of the 11 entities that, are they all local to Cleveland?
They all have local, most of them are Cleveland-based, all of them have... All of them have a Cleveland presence.
I mean, it goes to show that we have a lot of talent in Cleveland as well.
Yeah. Thank you, John.
Exhibit seven is a resolution regarding library insurance renewals. Whereas the library's insurance policies for property general liability, commercial auto, commercial crime, cyber liability, and pro access liability, and public officials and employment practices liability expire on August 1, 2025. And whereas in July 21, 2022, the board authorized the renewal of insurance package just stated within the resolution for four one-year renewal periods commencing August 1, 2023, provided that terms, conditions, and pricing remain comparable to the current programs and consistent with the then current market conditions. And whereas the 2025 issued premiums for the library's insurance policies, excluding builder's risk policies, and vehicles and buildings that were removed and added throughout the year totaled $640,588.50, and the Marsh and McGowan and Company, Inc., the library's two insurance brokers, estimate the cost of renewing the library's insurance policies for one year may cost approximately $727,000, an increase in the cost of 13.5% over the current premiums, which is consistent with industry-wide trends. And whereas Marsh and McGowan and Company, Inc., are working with underwriters and maybe seeking proposals from other carriers in order to locate policies with the most favorable terms to the library while continuing coverage without interruption. Now therefore, it be resolved that the board authorizes executive director, CEO, or his designated to make the final determination to accept insurance package that provide the best coverage, lowest overall cost for total annual premium for all policies not to exceed $727,000. And the coverage purchased will be presented for ratification by the Board of Library Trustees at their next regularly scheduled meeting. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rasheed?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
Exhibit A is a resolution authorizing amendment to an agreement with Applied Laser Technologies for Print Management Services. Whereas on May 16, 2019, the board authorized the library to enter an agreement with Applied Laser Technologies, BSL Applied Laser Technologies LLC, for print management services, including service and maintenance of library's multifunction devices, desktop printers, and production equipment for an annual cost not to exceed $90,000. Whereas effective July 1, 2019, the library entered an agreement with Applied for Print Management Services on an initial term of three years, with the option to renew for two additional terms in a year each. The board ratified the agreement for Print Management Services on September 16, 2019. Whereas on March 21, this board authorized the library to enter a contract for the purchase and maintenance to production printer equipment from Canon for use by the graphics department, thus removing maintenance and production printer equipment for Applied Laser Technologies scope. Whereas on June 18, 2024, on the recommendation of the library's chief innovation and technology officer, this board authorized the library to enter agreement to the library's amendment to the library's agreement for print management services with Applied Laser Technologies, extending the term of the agreement for an additional year of costs not to exceed $60,000. Whereas the library's IT department estimates that the $60,000 that this board approved in 2024 for print management services from July 1, 2024 through June 3, 2025 will be insufficient to cover the cost of services provided by Applied, and therefore recommends an additional $7,000 be added to the amended contract to cover the cost of print management services through June 30, 2025. Whereas the library's chief innovation and technology officer recommends the library amend its agreement with Applied Laser Technologies to extend the term of the agreement for an additional term beginning July 1, 2025 until June 30, 2026 for an additional cost not to exceed $80,000 based on the rates set forth in Exhibit A to this resolution, in order to allow the IT department time to issue requests for proposals for print management services estimated to begin in 2026. Now therefore, it be resolved the board hereby authorizes executive director, CEO, or his designated to enter an amendment to the library's agreement for Print Management Services of Applied Laser Technologies, BSL Applied Laser Technologies LLC, to increase the contract by an amount not to exceed $87,000 for print management services through June 30, 2026, which services shall be provided at the rates set forth in Exhibit A to this resolution, beginning on July 1, 2025 and ending on June 30, 2026, which amount shall be charged to the machine maintenance object 353350, which amendment shall be subject to the approval of the chief legal officer. So moved.
Second.
So does this mean 90 and 87? Or what's, what's the actual?
So what this means is really two parts. Adding an additional $7,000 to the $60,000 approved for the current term that ends on June 30th, so that we can pay for the rest of this year's services, and then up to $80,000 for the next 12 months. We don't expect, however, to be under contract, at least under this current contract with Applied Laser Technologies for the next 12 months after the renewal. This renewal option gives us the ability to terminate on 30 days' notice, so the intention is that we'll issue a request for proposal before the end of the year and have somebody selected, perhaps by January 1. It could be the same vendor, it could be somebody else, in which case we'll be able to terminate the contract and seamlessly start with the next one.
But to be, what happened, though, is we originally got into a $90,000 a year deal. We got a $30,000 reduction because of the investment in the Canon equipment.
For the graphics production.
For the graphic production. And so instead of 90 minus 30, 60, it turns out for this year, it's really 67.
Right.
Correct.
And increase number of prints in that.
Right. And then next year, instead of being 90, or until, for the period until we redo it, instead of being 90, the ceiling will now be 80.
Well, instead of being 67, it'll be 80 because the rates increased, and that's kind of based on, you know...
Usage increase, too. Yeah.
Okay. So moved.
I had second.
Okay.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rasheed?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And...
He's stuck up for... Yeah. And so I know during this time when we had this initial conversation last year, we had committed to continue to allow our community to have $2.50 worth of free prints, and we, until we make a decision on the new printer, we're going to continue with that.
Do we have data on that utilization? Like, are most people are...
Yeah, I think we brought it to one of the, what we will do is we'll bring that back to the board at the next, well, we did bring it, I think, to one of the board meetings, the number of, kind of, I think it was like 40,000 worth. Yeah. Yeah. We'll bring that back. We'll update it as well.
Exhibit nine is a resolution authorizing agreement for moving services for the offsite storage collection. Whereas the main library high-density mobile shelving project was undertaken to provide shelving capacity to enable the library to move the offsite storage collection, which consists of approximately 75,000 linear feet of bound volumes, or in other words, seven miles, fourteen and a half miles, to the main library in anticipation of decommissioning the Lake Shore facilities outlined in the facility's master plan. Whereas the main library high-density mobile shelving project was placed into service on January 1, 2025, increasing the shelving capacity of those stokeswings by approximately 100,000 linear feet, which is how many miles?
About 20 miles.
About 20. The library simultaneously developing a plan to remediate mold from the offsite storage collection that will enable the collection to be moved with a target start date September 2, 2025. And whereas in January 15, 2025, the library issued a request for proposals for moving services for moving the CPL offsite storage collection to main library to eight movers throughout the United States who specialize in moving library materials as well as advertise the RFP on the library's website. And whereas on March 13, 2025, the library received three proposals from qualified movers to summarize in Exhibit A to this resolution. Whereas on May 14, 2025, the library received an additional two proposals for moving services from mold remediation companies who also submitted proposals to remediate mold in the library's offsite storage collection, and whose separate moving services from those proposals are also summarized in Exhibit A to this resolution. Whereas the library rigorously analyzed the price and qualification of work methods of five proposals and found National Library Relocations, Inc.'s proposal of $535,000 to be the most cost-effective qualified option. And whereas the library administration recommends that this board authorize the library to add $53,500 to the contract with National Library Relocations to cover unanticipated moving costs that may rise throughout the course of this project, basically a 10% contingent. Whereas even the addition of up to $53,000, $50,500 to National Library Relocations contract, which represents 10% of the quoted price, its price still represents the lowest quote received by the library. Now therefore, it be resolved that the board hereby authorizes executive director, CEO, or his designated to enter an agreement with National Library Relocations, Inc., the amount of $535,000 for moving services to be undertaken in conjunction with the mold remediation of the offsite storage collection, to make subsequent amendments to such agreement as needed for additional amount not to exceed $58,500, resulting in a maximum total contract price not to exceed $588,500, which amount shall be charged to general fund account 1103005454720, Preservation Services, and which agreement shall be subject to the approval by the chief's legal officer. So moved.
Second.
And you can see by looking at Exhibit A that the cost of this stuff is pretty much way over, you know, the range from lowest to highest.
It's enormous, child, for an enormous amount of money, but the $535 or $588, whichever it is, that includes mold remediation, and they don't tell which portion of, is that cost?
Mold remediation is a separate vendor. That's coming next.
That's not included in this?
That's not included in that. Each mover has their own techniques. Some use crates. Crates are far more expensive than carts, and so this is why there's a wide variation. And this is why we have a competitive process.
Yeah.
And so we interviewed National Library Relocations. I checked all their references. I was in New York two weeks ago. I stopped at the New York Public Library. I talked to their director of special projects. They've used National Library. He had positive things to say. This is a very specialized type of work, because they have to keep these items in order. And not only that, in this project, they will have been handled by another party first. So we had two vendors drop out because they said that you're allowing someone else to handle the collection first. And so, I mean, this all comes down to supervision and, and having a tight process.
Is the thought that the reason they dropped out is due to, like, exposure or liability?
It's due to the fact that if we have someone else handling it and they get it out of order, then it's now the responsibility. We told those parties they had to keep our collection in order. So that comes down to your procedures and supervision. And so we're, I was pleased to have five companies that would, well, two of them would provide both services. So we allowed everyone to bid on everything if they were qualified. And so we had three movers who just were providing for moving services, and what was your question again?
Really, but for the two who had dropped out, was it this, was it the biggest thought that because there would be two separate entities and pieces, it has more exposure or liability if something went wrong?
Now, my, you know, I've, this isn't my first move, so I am also going to be watching like a hawk. So they don't know that, but I know that. And so, so I have confidence that we can make this work. Because if I didn't, I, you know...
You would do it this way.
Correct. So, yes, I won't get into too much detail, or the director will give me the hook, but I will be hovering.
So, so what, after this contract is engaged, what is the cost of, how much is the cost of the whole project?
Well, we would add this to the mold, and, which I believe, yes, it, I don't know, I did add them together. I don't have that number memorized. But, but it's...
You can just add them.
Right. Because we added, we added 10% to it as well. So it's under, it's about a million dollars with the 10%, approximately a million dollars, which is within what we budgeted. So we're right on target. And this is all based on experience and gut and best estimates.
Well, as I tell anybody, I always say that the largest least-known construction project in Cleveland is going on in Stokeswing.
So we're basically, we have 75,000 feet of material. A shelf is three feet out at Lake Shore. We're basically doing, moving one shelf 25,000 times. So I keep telling myself that, which makes it sound easier to me, actually, because when you go out there and see this volume of material, it seems almost impossible. Except these companies do this. It's totally possible, and I don't have to move the books myself. So when I tell myself that, then I take a deep breath and say, okay, just take, keep taking a deep breath.
At some point, you're just going to push a button, and the whole shelf moves so beautifully.
It's, it will be nice when, when, when we put the last book on the shelves.
And, and having previously made clear that I'm not connected in any way to Corrigan Moving, but they were our principal movers for what we've done up till now.
Yes, and they're excellent. And so our job, as I saw it, was to, to canvas the nation for qualified vendors. And we had a very thorough process. We required everyone to come to Cleveland. Some visited more than once. And then we waited and received the proposals, and then we looked at price, and we investigated their proposals, interviewed their references, to see if there was anything to disqualify a proposal. There was not. And in fact, we found quite the opposite. So I feel that we had a very strong process.
Where is ACE relocation from Cleveland? They're from Cleveland, I was with that.
So ACE was from Cleveland, Corrigan, and, you know, and National Library is in Iceland and New York. So they're, they are out of state.
Okay. Well, so moved, and it's been seconded, I guess, so.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rasheed?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker.
Exhibit 10, I think that's from next, right? Whereas Resolution Authorizing Agreement for Mold Remediation Services for the Offsite Storage Collection. Whereas the main library high-density mobile shelving project was undertaken to provide shelving capacity to enable the library to move the offsite storage collection, consists of approximately 75,000 linear feet of bound volumes, to main library in anticipation of the decommission of Lake Shore facilities outlined in the facility's master plan. Whereas the project was placed into service on January 2025 and increasing the shelving capacity of Stokeswing to approximately 100,000 linear feet. Whereas the library is developing a plan to move the offsite storage collection with a target start date of September 2, 2025. And whereas in the summer of 2018, a mechanical failure, the air conditioning system and the related monitoring system caused relative humidity in the offsite facility to rise to levels as high as 90%, causing an outbreak of mold growth at scattered spots throughout the collection. And whereas the HVAC system at the offsite storage facility has been maintained at the recommended 60 degrees Fahrenheit and 30 to 50% RH since the mold outbreak, preventing further mold growth and harm to the collection. Whereas before the offsite collection and remove the main library, existing mold must be remediated throughout the collection. And whereas on March 5, 2025, the library issued a request for proposals for mold remediation for the Cleveland Public Library Offsite Storage Collection project, oops, to five qualified companies throughout the U.S. And whereas on May 14, 2025, the library received five proposals to summarize in Exhibit A. Whereas the library rigorously analyzed the pricing qualifications and work methods of the five proposals and found Polygon U.S. Corporation's proposal at $344,622.80 to be the most cost-effective qualified option. Whereas the library administration recommends that this board authorize the library to add through separate amendments up to an additional $34,500 with the contract with Polygon U.S. Corporation to cover unanticipated costs that might arise during the course of the project. And whereas even with the addition of $34,500 to Polygon U.S. Corporation's contract, which represents approximately 10% of the quoted price, its price still represents the lowest quote received by the library. Now therefore, it be resolved that the board hereby authorizes executive director, CEO, or his designated to enter an agreement with Polygon U.S. Corporation in the amount of $344,622.80 for roll remediation services to make subsequent amendments to such agreement as needed for an additional amount not to exceed $34,500, resulting in a maximum total contract price not to exceed $379,122.80, which amount shall be charged to general not to exceed $379,122.80, which amount shall be charged to general fund account 1103005454720 preservation services and which agreement shall be submitted to the approval by the library's chief legal officer. So moved. And Exhibit A shows you again, pretty wide range in prices and Polygon clearly lower than the others. Tell us about Polygon USA.
So Polygon is a national company. We, the library has priority service agreements with two companies. In the case of a disaster, Polygon is one of them. That means that if we have a disaster, they'll know who we are when we pick up the phone and say, we need help. They have done work, once again, for the New York Public Library and many large institutions. I contacted their references and had good feedback. The project, at its, essentially, we, when the incident happened in 2018, the library got the environmental conditions under control and have been, they have been under control since 2018. So the mold has not continued to grow. It kind of freezes. It's in a state of stasis unless the temperature and humidity rise again and then it will, you'll have an even worse outbreak the next time. So, but when there is a mold outbreak, spores just grow exponentially and I'm not in, this isn't technical language, but then you have bloom on materials. And so the goal of this is to reduce the mold spores that are present in the collection. So essentially, there's a tremendous amount of vacuuming with a HEPA filter vacuum that will capture the spores that are present on top of, on the sides of the materials. And then they wipe them with a cosmetic sponge to remove the discoloration from any mold bloom. That is essentially what we will do and then clean the shelves.
And, and I know I remember asking at the time, but it refreshed my recollection. When the incident occurred, were we or can we, for the future, be insured for such things?
Yeah, depending on your air conditioning.
It's not an insurance claim. I did ask about that years ago, but I was told that it was a maintenance issue and that it was not covered. And I don't know if there's anything to add to that.
No, I think that's it.
If your air conditioner failed again, that same thing could happen again, right?
It could, but we have remote monitoring now, which we did not have then. I don't know if John wants to speak to any of that, but we, we're in a better position to know, I think, at this point.
We are. The building automation system was installed since this issue. So we have, and just so you know, we have people home on weekends. Our maintenance mechanics who are keeping an eye on temperature and relative humidity in all of our spaces and alarms are gone. Also, board may recall, you approved a chiller replacement project for Lake Shore in 2021 timeframe. So of the two main chillers out of the Lake Shore, one's been completely renewed, one was in good repair. So very confident we'll be able to keep environment controls.
They say if the paper's not actually wet, in which case you'd have to freeze these spores.
Freeze dry.
But if they're dry, you brush and so forth.
Yes, and we interviewed Polygon with, in addition to checking references, I always like to have an interview and grill, or interview rather, the other, the proposer. And we, what was your question again? I'm sorry.
Oh, it doesn't matter.
I wanted to answer it.
Nothing is absolutely wet to the point where you'd have to freeze the material before you try to clean it.
Right. I was, there was something else, but I was going to make a point, but now it's gone.
I'm sorry.
But.
But anyway, you're sure, I'm sure that you've done your due diligence.
So we did interview them. We talked about process. We talked about change orders. They don't use change orders very often. I do not like change orders. And so.
I second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes. Exhibit 11, Resolution Authorizing Purchase of VMware Software Licenses. Whereas the Cleveland Public Library utilizes software licenses through VMware for its computing environment, which makes it possible to deploy reliable, secure and standardized technology environments such as server storage and secure connectivity to host the library's applications within the CPL data center. Whereas this particular software system is used to host the library's virtual servers, including the Tyler Enterprise ERP, Munis Base Camp, the self-checkout system, Lutron, the building lighting control and various other systems and apps. Whereas these software licenses previously were purchased and administered through Clevnet prior to Cleveland Public Library establishing its own internal IT department. Whereas CPL IT department desires to purchase these VMware licenses for the library through a bulk purchase agreement with OARNET, a Division of Ohio Department of Higher Education's Ohio Technology Consortium, and improve, which delivers technology-based solutions that reduce costs, increase productivity, improve customer service and which serves Ohio's education, healthcare, public broadcasting and government communities. And whereas OARNET has proposed to provide the necessary VMware software licenses to the library for a five-year term beginning retroactively on July 31, 2024 and ending on July 30, 2029, at a cost of $91,213 to be invoiced and paid by CPL on annual installments over the five-year term. The library's IT department recommends that this board authorize this purchase. Now therefore be resolved that the board hereby authorizes executive director, CEO is designated to enter an agreement with OARNET for VMware software license for a five-year term and a cost not to exceed $91,213.44 as set forth in Exhibit A of this resolution, which amount shall be charged to general fund account 1301005353360 computer maintenance and subscriptions and which agreement shall be submitted to the approval of the chief legal officer. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
I just wanted to.
It would generally have been John Malcolm, but this is really for Clevnet. Clevnet uses this as their foundation.
Clevnet has their own subscription.
Yeah.
For its own. I mean, that's basically, I guess my question was going to be, did the, our having our own licenses did not add to our cost. It just meant that the Clevnet people have their own separate cost for similar licenses.
Yeah, they'll have their own separate.
Yeah.
Okay. And in the old days, for people who weren't around as long as me, all those things for Clevnet were approved here, but now Clevnet does that on their own at this point.
Correct.
Yeah, and then Clevnet purchases over 75,000 are reported to the board on the vendor report. So purchases over 75 for Clevnet, no, do not go before the board for approval.
Let me just discuss that, Anna, right, the team's meetings that we have, but that's it, yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not creating a loop, a loophole that I didn't think of before today. Thanks a lot. Exhibit, let's see, Exhibit 12, Resolution to Amend Agreement with Securitas Technology for Alarm Monitoring Services. Whereas on September 19, 2024, the board authorized the library into agreeing with Securitas Technology for Alarm Monitoring Library Locations for initial term of one year, the option renewed for two subsequent year terms for a total cost of $91,392. Whereas Securitas encounters, encountered a series of delays in implementing its alarm monitoring services due to compatibility issues between the library's existing alarm panels and hardware and the hardware required by Securitas to perform its services. Whereas because of these compatibility issues, Securitas has not been able to take over monitoring of all alarms across the system. Instead, alarms have been transferred from guardian alarm to Securitas for monitoring on a piecemeal basis as the necessary upgrades are completed each branch. Whereas Securitas conducted a survey of the alarm panels at each remaining branch and presented the library with a change order in the amount of $38,868, which represents the cost of additional hardware and labor required in order for Securitas to begin alarm, alarm monitoring services at the remaining branches. Whereas the administration finds Securitas' change order to be fair and reasonable as many of the costs contained in the change order are costs that the library required to pay regardless of which vendor was selected to provide alarm monitoring services. Now therefore be resolved that the board hereby authorizes executive director, CEO is designated to amend the agreement with Securitas Technology for Alarm Monitoring Services subject to approval of library's chief legal officer to increase the total cost of the contract by $38,868, thus bringing the total cost of the contract to $130,260 of expenditure being charged to the general fund account 12930053-53340 building maintenance. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And Exhibit 13 is Resolution to Amend Agreement with Benish Friedlander, Copeland and Aronoff LLP for Legal Services. Whereas on January 10, 2020, the library entered an agreement with Benish Friedlander, Copeland and Aronoff Benish for a flat fee of $25,000 to provide real estate legal services in connection with the drafting negotiation of an option agreement with the predecessor Northwest Neighborhood CDC for the mixed-use development of the Walls Branch and for legal services related to development of comprehensive master construction manager agreement covering all of the phase one projects of the facilities master plan. Whereas in February 2020 and November 19, 2020, the board authorized subsequent amendments to agree with Benish, increasing the fee by $53,000 to a total of $78,000, covering among other things, preparation of construction operation and reciprocal easement agreement, which governs the construction of the mixed-use project and whereas, and its subsequent operation. Whereas negotiations of the Korea began in 2021, but work was put on hold for extended periods beginning in 2022 and again 2024 due to the available funding for the senior apartments as well as other external factors, the library and NN CDC resumed negotiations in earnest early 2025 and the Korea is nearly complete. And whereas as we all, we saw the changes that occurred since the library and Northwest Neighborhood CDC first began negotiating the Korea, including changes in nature and it, CDC's financing, inclusion of the CDC's equity investor lender and guarantor in contract negotiations, the library incurred higher legal fees than initially anticipated and has Benish's total legal fees to date for the Walls Branch project are $112,392.50 and Benish estimates that the total legal fees required to get the project to closing will not exceed $128,000, which accounts for potential though not presently anticipated issues that may arise during the venue of negotiations. And whereas the library's chief legal officer finds Benish's fees to be fair and reasonable and requests authority to increase the Benish agreement by $95,000. $33,000 of the funds approved in 2020 remain unspent to a total contract amount not to exceed $173,000. Further requests authority to enter a new engagement agreement with Benish for their assistance on an administrative basis with matters relating to the Walls Branch project that may arise in the future and be resolved that the board hereby authorizes executive director, CEO, his chief legal officer to amend the agreement with Benish to increase their fee by $95,000 to an amount not to exceed $173,000 for the legal services in connection with the Walls Branch, which expenditure shall be charged to the capital project funds, including the building repair fund 401, the construction taxes fund 402 and/or the construction taxable fund 403 and be further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the executive director, CEO, his chief legal officer to enter into a separate engagement agreement with Benish for their assistance on administrative basis and as related to Walls Branch at rates of $400 to $650 per hour for associates and $650 to $925 an hour for partners, which expenditure shall be charged to capital funds project, including the building repair fund, the construction taxes fund and/or the construction taxable fund 403 and requires that the fiscal office provide a report to the board of trustees of fees paid to Benish on a quarterly basis. So moved.
Second.
Brian, just, who are the lawyers at Benish who are doing this with you?
So our primary contact at Benish has been Jared Oakes, who addressed this board at the March Board meeting. Working very closely alongside Jared are two of his associates, Sam Minzer and Justin Maroney. They have been doing an excellent job in helping to keep costs reined in as much as possible. It had been anticipated by me for quite some time that we'd have to go back to the board for legal fees for Benish since what was approved several years ago was clearly not enough to get us through to the finish line. But I just wanted to point out a few things that have changed in the intervening five years since we really began negotiations on this project. We had two very significant start-stop events where work proceeded very quickly to get to a closing and then stopped because of funding concerns on our partner's side in '22 and '24. Added to that was or is the complication now of having an entirely different team on our partner's side representing Northwest Neighborhoods with the addition now of their equity investor, their lender and their guarantor, each of whom has taken an active role in negotiating the agreement, making it such that we're negotiating essentially with four parties. The library, my direction, has taken an active role and really been in the driver's seat in drafting the agreement, which I think is to our benefit because we will be, we'll be the one constant here as this building or as NN CDC's portion of the building can be sold in the future. We really want to be in a position to have an agreement that we understand and can administer easily. That said, I know I've been saying this for months, but I, I mean it now more than ever. We are very close, literally can count the issues on one hand.
Mr. Lang, could you come here?
Yes.
Please introduce, what's the name of the paradox that you introduced? John Lang brought this up at the, at the, one of our leadership team meetings.
Well, I didn't, I certainly didn't make it up, but some of you may be familiar with Zeno's Paradox, which is the concept that you have to increasingly cut the distance by half to the point you're going to, and you can do that infinitely so that you'll never reach your end stage.
You'll never reach the end, right. We will.
But we're, we're down to, down to this.
So this, this process seems to be ongoing forever, but we're, we're getting there.
It seems to me there was a fire sign theater joke about Zennon's Paradox and Damocles' sword in their acting, as I remember. Anybody can remember Fire Sign Theater, but in any event, thank you, John, for.
Thank you.
And you feel pretty good about the outside estimate that Benish has given at this point?
Yes. We are literally at the point where I can count on one hand the material outstanding issues and they may get wrapped up, if not today, I expect within the next couple of days. I think the number that Benish gave us was on the very much conservative side.
Okay. And I guess, what was the other thing I was going to ask you? Well, I just want to, you have no concern that a contract we made with Benish that was started out at $25,000 and it's now $175,000 almost, is caused by the circumstances of what happened in this project?
Yes, it is caused by the circumstances of the project. And I want to also point out that the $25,000 contract that we initially entered into was not for the entire scope of this project. That was just leading into the first option agreement, which was renewed and then subsequently amended. So it was at a point where the entire shape of this project was yet unknown.
I just want to make sure that it wasn't appropriate down payment on what we actually did, so, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brian.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Exhibit 14.
Are you taking a break?
Exhibit 14 is the Sixth Amendment to the Year 2025 appropriation, whereas O Rice Code 5705.40 provides for amendment or appropriation as you are necessary, whereas it's now deemed necessary to amend the Year 2025 appropriation measure, which complies with the amended official certificate rest and resources requested by the Budget Commission on June 10, 2025. And whereas the aggregate of all appropriation classifications does not exceed the total amounts submitted to the Budget Commission, now therefore be resolved that the sums indicated on the attached Sixth Amendment to the Year 2025 appropriation schedule be approved.
Second.
And Carrie, what's our biggest increase here?
We're budgeting, the biggest increase is the appropriation for the $100,000 grant from the Cleveland Public Library Foundation under the Founders Fund and under the Early Literacy Fund.
Great.
Ms. Bunz?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
The balance of the very long Finance Committee report.
Yeah.
Consists of fiscal officers report A, report on investments, report B, report on conference and travel expenditures, report C, report on all vendor expenditures, report D, report on expenditures made from the owner's contingency funds for West Park MLK, Rockport and Glenville campuses, report E, report on expenditures made from the owner's contingency fund for the high-density shelving project, report F, report on expenditures made from the owner's contingency fund for the new main library staff breakout project, the break room project, whereas.
the break room project, whereas N, report on expenditures made from the owner's contingency fund for the Tech Central renovation project, report H. That completes the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Trustee Corrigan. Yes, it was long. We're now going to move into the Human Resources Committee Report. Trustee Chikarian?
Yes, for the Human Resources Committee Report, I present Exhibit 15, the regular employment report detailing new hires, transfers, terminations, resignations, retirements, and sadly one staff member who passed away. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikarian?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
And I present Exhibit 16, retirement recognition citation. A citation has been issued for the following staff members on the occasion of their retirement. William Spencer, library services coordinator for 20 years, Angela Harris Scott, children's librarian for 26 years, and our dear friend Lynn, sorry, who is here with us today, chief town officer after six years, but many years prior to that in public service. Be it resolved that this citation for the above staff members presented by the Board of Trustees in appreciation of their faithful and dedicated service given to the library be recorded in the minutes of this meeting and be it further resolved that the citation be sent to them forthwith if they are not present at this meeting of the Board of Trustees. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikarian?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
So. So I give, we give Lynn the opportunity to say something, but she's not going anywhere, so we'll be seeing her for a while still as she helps us with negotiations. But we will be having cake at 2:30 for Lynn and a welcome to Anna for joining us. We'll be out in the lobby and then in here at 2:30 to do that as we work through that.
And that concludes the Human Resources Committee Report.
Thank you. We're now going to move into the Community Services Report. Trustee Friar, please.
Report I is the monthly activity report. It's not hyperlinked.
I saw that.
But if there's anything that anyone wants to add, we'll make sure we get that.
Yeah.
I think there is some technology difficulties.
We can turn it over to John for the building status update.
John, you've been busy.
I'll keep it brief. We've already talked about the Glenville and Walz projects. Right before the meeting today, Tana, thanks, Tana, handed me a copy of Northeast Ohio Properties Management, I'm sorry, Properties Magazine. It's, it's a trade, trade magazine regarding architecture, construction, local design and development. It had in here, featured the fact that our Rockport and Huff were winners of the Green Building Design Challenge, which I mentioned last month. So I knew that was going to be in here, but was also in here was a result of the ACE Cleveland. ACE is a mentorship program for CMSD students who are interested in futures in architecture, construction or engineering, whether trades or white collar. They do an annual project response. It's at the national level. It's usually divine, in this case, it was a community center. The students are able, they have a rubric and they learn cost estimating and some basic design and, and planning. This year, the winner, the winning team was from John Hay. They designed a community center and at the Champions Luncheon, they said they were inspired by CPL's Martin Luther Jr. Library, which, which I thought was great. And then just, and then since, speaking of MLK, just to follow on to Jaclyn's comments earlier, you know, we really strive for flexibility and innovative design in all of our libraries. The early design of MLK was before my time, so certainly no credit to me, but insisting on that flexibility for a 450-person raised table to support banquets, classroom, community events was great. I don't think anyone anticipated a skating rink or indoor, indoor bumper cars, but it's just a testament to the flexibility of that building's design that we were able to incorporate that program. So very happy to do that. And then on a less positive note, we did have some roof leaks after the storms last weekend, specifically Carnegie West and Sterling Branch were resolving those leaks. They're not catastrophic or anything, but I do think as we work towards what the new by name is going to be and what our capacity for lending for the next group of projects is going to be, it does underscore the need to continue the investment, which I know the director is 100% behind, on the projects that are not renovated. And again, it was really great to have our 11th project at Glenville completed last week and the getting shovels in the ground very soon for our 12th project, which will be Walz.
Any materials damaged in the leaks?
No, it seems like membrane and flashing, so it should be pretty reasonable repairs.
Perfect.
It sounds like with the students that you mentioned, we found another patron spotlight.
Yeah.
I love it. Yes.
Thank you so much. Turn it over to Shanice for the building status update and the advocacy staff's update.
As it relates to advocacy, just underscoring our next step based, next steps based on Tim's presentation, getting that letter out to the Conference Committee from Director Thomas, also writing a draft for the board if you want them to send it to the Conference Committee or other decision makers. Number two, looking at the candidate, candidate list and our incumbents who are going to be moving forward for future elections and continuing Director Thomas's outreach education about the work and the impact that we have in the community each and every day. And also really looking at where the pockets of money are throughout government, local, federal and state, to see where we can take advantage of that, aligning what we do with the new administration when that does happen. That's all I have for advocacy.
And I just want to point out a milestone. The, I had to miss the last foundation meeting and I don't think I've missed but one before and since I've been the liaison for this board. And I want you to know that I don't think that I've ever felt less concerned about missing one, partly because of the momentum and continuing work of your staff and you, Shanice, on how that thing is going. It has become a self-operating entity to our benefit and that's to be really commended, so. I'd like to be missed, but it's kind of neat that I don't.
We missed you. We definitely missed you. Thank you, Trustee Corrigan. To Trustee Corrigan's point and also to Tim's point with the choppy headwinds, we are exploring Director Thomas, number one, Nioba. We're working on our Nioba project, but looking ahead how the foundation can continue to be a viable resource for the library long after I'm gone, long after everyone else is going and exploring what that looks like to ensure the long-term sustainability of the foundation in support of the library. So that's a focal point. I would say save the date, October 9th is our Black White and Read. We will share it with Stephanie for the board. We're working in partnership with Erica's team and Amanda Knox will be our keynote.
And I also want to point out at Glenville, Tom and Lisa Mandel both turned to me to say, was that Shanice? And it was kind of nice to be able to say, yeah, that's Shanice. So obviously the family members of the Mandel Foundation were impressed with our stuff and obviously that's why Fleet happened. And Steve Hoffman, who basically spoke, was the executive director of the Mandel Foundation, basically said it was the coordination, collaboration that was envisioned and hoped for on Glenville that made the Fleet grant so meaningful and obvious as far as he was concerned. And for those who weren't there, he mentioned that in his remarks as well. So there's a lot to be said for where we've been and where we're going and how far we have to go still.
Yes, yes. It takes a team, can't do anything without the team and the vision. So grateful. Thank you.
And lastly, we'll turn it over to Ashley for the diversity, inclusion, accessibility and belonging.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Few updates from DIAB. On Wednesday, May 21st, the department arranged visitors from Kaiahaka Dee Dee to attend the Youth and Family Services Meeting to train CPL staff on DIAB sensory kits and provide information about things to consider when working with patrons with autism. On Saturday, June 7th, we participated in the Pride Parade. Our goal was to have 100 marchers for, to celebrate our 100. We did not reach our goal. We were just shy of our goal, but we were real represented. We had our resource table. We had CPL play, join us, so there were games at our resource table, and then we also had face painting in the outdoor reading garden. On Wednesday, June 11th, we hosted our first Latino Leadership Panel entitled Vision to Voice, Triumph, Setbacks and Tenacity. This was in partnership with Young Latino Network, Julio and Julio de Borges. We also had our keynote speaker Hector Castenelliósas. And I'm probably pronouncing that wrong, but he is also well-known for doing our Parade the Circle, if you will. So he was our keynote for the event. And last but definitely not least, on Saturday, June 14th, we celebrated Pride at the Freedom Fest. We had a resource table there. This event was orchestrated by Karamu in partnership with Metro Health. And this year, we highlighted local author Habrina Shepherd with her book, Habrina the Amazing, which speaks about a young girl who has a very big name, Habrina, and she's going to a new school and she's worried about introducing herself. So it talks about empowering people with big names and being confident in who you are. And we also partnered with local community partner, Birthing Beautiful Communities. And that concludes the DIAB report.
Thank you.
Don't go far.
Yes.
Don't go far.
I want to point out that I heard from, I had two friends connected to the parade and they were very proud of CPL's participation in the parade. Metro Health tried to have a bigger unit. We had a bigger unit than Metro Health had and the other, all of a sudden, I'm forgetting the name of the organization of the other friend of mine, and he said he was very glad to see the library so well represented at the Pride Parade, so thank you.
And we had, obviously, the, had the Rocky River Group, the library, and then County Public Library, and they saw our, how big our group was. So we did a big group and we, we were talking about next year just going out totally as libraries, the county libraries altogether. And so I think that's going to be really, really good, being led by CPL.
Of course. That's our building.
Yes.
That concludes the Community Services.
Thank you so much. There is no old business, new business. Trustee Rashid, please.
Yes, so we have Exhibit 17, Resolution to Adopt Policy on Supplier Opportunity. Whereas the Board of the Library Trustees adopted a supplier diversity statement on September 26, 2019, that affirmed the library's commitment to developing and implementing standards and procedures to achieve, in full extent possible, the inclusion of diverse firms in all levels of library business. And whereas consistent with the supplier diversity statement on April 15th, 2021, the Board of Library Trustees adopted a policy on supplier diversity that described in detail the various procedures for the library administration to follow in order to achieve the goals set forth in the supplier diversity statement. And whereas while the library's efforts to include firms from all backgrounds at all levels of the library business have been successful, the library administration has found the prescriptive procedure set forth in the supplier diversity policy to be overly restrictive and difficult to implement universally, thus adding complications and inefficiencies to the procurement process. And whereas the library administration remains committed to providing qualified individuals and businesses from all backgrounds with an equal opportunity to do business with the library and recommends that this board adopt the policy on supplier opportunity in the form attached to this resolution, which reaffirms the library's commitment to diversity and allows the library administration to implement and modify procedures as needed in order to ensure that opportunities to, to do business with the library are made available to the broadest array of potential vendors and to promote efficiency in the procurement process. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland Public Library Board of Trustees hereby adopts the attached policy on supplier opportunity, which shall be, which shall become effective commencing on June 17th, 2025, and shall supersede the supplier diversity policy and instructs the library administration to develop the procedures necessary to achieve the policy's objective. So.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikarian?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And that concludes the business.
Thank you.
I just want to double check, what are the biggest changes here?
Brian and Ashley can speak to that.
And thank you, because I know this was two, like two years in the making, so I'm glad we got it to this point.
So, excuse me, to your question about what are the biggest changes here, Trustee Corrigan, the largest change here is really that the policy as presented to the board today for approval is just our policy statement without procedures to implement. The policy statement is worded slightly differently in what you see before you versus what was previously approved, because the intent there was to mirror the policy language one would find in an equal employment opportunity policy. That is, the library is making available to the broadest array of potential vendors opportunities to do business with us and that all those opportunities would be made available equally to anybody, regardless of any protected classification that they might fall within, defined by state, federal or local laws.
Okay.
And it just gives our staff more flexibility in accepting a larger range of main opportunity for vendors to present.
I just want to make sure that nobody will interpret this as our reacting to the MAGA and orange monsters challenge. Everywhere.
Well, the Department of DIAB, as well as the procurement department, will continue to monitor the processes and procedures and how we do business with our diverse suppliers. And in addition to that, we will continue to watch progress. So in 2021, we had a 9% increase with our business with diverse suppliers. 2024, we're at a 29% increase, and so we will continue to watch that pattern and hope to see those numbers increase. So we will continue to have oversight over that to ensure that we're doing our due diligence to support our diverse suppliers.
Since I'm not proud of some law firm reactions, I was glad to see, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, this is starting.
This is from two years ago.
Yeah. It started two years ago.
We started working on this.
Oh, I know. I just want to make sure, nobody can view this as that, is my point.
No, no.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Again, no public comments for today, but at this time, I move to adjourn to Executive Session to consider the discipline of public employees.
So moved.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikarian?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
She had a setback, yeah.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yeah, we'll go quickly. If you want to bring your lunches, you can enter Executive. It won't be too long in Executive Session. You can come back and have lunch or you can take lunch with you.
I see you too.
Don't go to work. Give us five minutes.
When I was outside with the dog.
Hey, how are you?
I've got to move that adjourn out of the second session.
Second.
Alice, Alice.
Alice, 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 we need your vote. Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Viegas?
Yes.
Ms. Friar?
Yes.
And I now call the meeting adjourned, the full board meeting adjourned.
Thank you.